All right. Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, December 16th, 2020 meeting of the Lawrence Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Commission. My name is David Carter. I'm the Commission Chair. And before we continue, I'm going to turn this over to Kyle Kobe to describe how we're going to be conducting the meeting.
Thank you very much. My name is Kyle Kobe and I'll be facilitating the Zoom video portion of the meeting. Joining me here in the City Commission Room is Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. We will work alongside the Chair who's on remote video to facilitate the meeting proceedings. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel. During the meeting, please mute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon found in the lower left-hand corner of the Zoom menu next to the video icon. When you are muted, a red line will appear over the icon. This will make it easier for everyone to hear the meeting. Just remember to unmute if and when you want to speak. In the menu, you can also turn your camera on or off by clicking the video icon located next to the microphone icon. For the purposes of this public meeting, please keep your video on for the duration. Sorry, just one second. If you are participating by phone, you can enter star six to mute and unmute your phone. Somewhere on your Zoom screen, you will also see a choice to toggle between speaker and gallery view. Speaker view shows the active speaker. Gallery view tiles all of the meeting participants. Commissioners, you must state your name and title each time you speak. Members of staff must also state their name and title each time they speak. I would also ask that applicants and members of the public identify themselves each time before they speak to ensure that everyone is able to follow along. When public comment is sought on an item, individuals participating via Zoom should use the raise your hand feature. Windows and Mac users can access this feature through the participants button at the bottom of their screen. Android and iPhone users can access this feature through the more button located at the bottom right corner of their screen. For those calling in by phone, you may dial star nine. Individuals will be called upon by name in the order they appear on the meeting post screen. When you are called on, please unmute your listening device and state your name before speaking. The Chair will then call for in-person public comment for those who are physically present. Staff will direct you to the podium to speak while following social distancing and safety protocols. The regular three-minute time limit will apply. All motions will need to be stated clearly. After a motion is made and seconded, staff will call on each Commissioner individually to provide their vote. Staff will then need to announce whether the motion carried and the count of the vote. I want to again remind everyone to please mute yourself when you're not speaking. I'll now turn the meeting back over to the Chair.
Thank you, Kyle. David Carter, Chair. Let's start off the meeting with minutes. So the Commissioners should have received the minutes in their package. And unless anyone has any, well, first of all, I'd ask, does anyone have any amendments or corrections that they'd like to make? And if not, I'll accept a motion to accept. Commissioner Sands.
Rob Sands, Plating Commissioner, make a motion to accept the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Sands. Do I have a second? Commissioner Sinclair. And Jeff, could I ask you to read off the roll, please?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler, or excuse me, I think Commissioner Butler is absent. That's correct. Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
I was not present. Abstention.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff? Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
I also abstain.
Motion passes seven, zero, and two abstentions.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. Next, do we have any reports from any committees that have met over the past month? Okay, seeing none. Jeff, do we have any written communications from the public that were not present in our packet?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, all communications were included in your packet this evening.
Thank you. And that goes for written communications from staff, planning Commissioners or other Commissioners?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, that's correct.
Thanks, David Carter, Chair. How about the written action of any waiver requests or determinations made by the city engineer?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director, we had none of those items this evening.
Thank you. Do any Commissioners have any ex parte communications to report? Okay, seeing none. Do any Commissioners wish to declare any abstentions from specific agenda items? All right. At this point, this is a period of general public comment for any items that are not already on the agenda. So if you're here to speak about an agenda item, please wait for that item. Otherwise, is there, let's see, is there anyone on the on the meeting who would like to speak about something not on the agenda? And if so, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. Thank you. And Kyle and Jeff, is there anyone in the Commission Chambers who seems to be wanting to speak about an item not on the agenda?
Kyle Kobe, Planning. The folks present are here to speak on items that are already on the agenda.
Fantastic. Thank you, David Carter, Chair. With that case, let's go ahead and move on to, I believe, if I understand, will be considering items one and two at the same time, but they'll be covered by separate motions. Jeff, is that, is that correct?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director, that is correct. So they could be taken up at the same time, but they would require two separate motions for consideration.
Very good. And thanks. And David Carter, Chair, before we continue, also, I understood that we were planning to move item five up to third place ahead of items three and four. Can you tell me if that's still necessary? I believe I see Mary on the call.
Let Mary confer. I think we can hold the agenda if Mary confirms. Okay. Mary is able to get with us on the 6:30 there, so we would just recommend holding the agenda as is.
Very good. Thank you, David Carter, Chair. So let's go ahead to items one and two related to a rezoning and a preliminary development plan for, let's see, 5101 Parker Court. And I believe Sandy, are you going to be presenting on this?
I am. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner Sandy Day, Planner Two. This proposed development includes multiple applications. The application includes the request for the rezoning and the preliminary development plan is stated. The proposed development is for detached residential uses on individual lots. The application was initially submitted as conventional zoning request with a preliminary plat, but during the review, it was determined that the nature and configuration of the development required the use of a private street. Private streets are only permitted in planned developments. Therefore, the application, the applications were revised to include the PD overlay in the zoning and the preliminary plat application was revised to a preliminary development plan. The preliminary development plan also functions as a preliminary plat in this project. The property is located on the northeast corner of Walkerusa Drive and Eisenhower Drive. The surrounding area is developing with a variety of residential uses and a vacant lot is located to the west of the subject property. The existing zoning is PCD and it's part of the Westwood Hills Town Homes that is located to the northeast at the end of the Parker Court cul-de-sac. The existing zoning has been in place since around 2000 without any movement to develop the commercial part of that, of that property. The project is included in part of the commercial inventory because of the zoning regardless of its longstanding vacancy. Residents in the area have indicated support of the residential over commercial land uses for this parcel. The proposed development request represents residential infill development on individual lots with access from a private street. Neighborhood character in that area includes that variety of residential uses, including detached dwellings, but also multiple dwellings duplex and triplex development in the immediate vicinity. There's no area plan for this part of that neighborhood. The existing zoning really is no longer suitable with the context of the land development code. The property was platted with significant access restrictions, making it difficult to integrate into the larger neighborhood to the areas to the south and to the west. Access to the property is really restricted to just that north side and requires rezoning to an appropriate base zoning district to develop at this point. The proposed residential development is consistent with the established residential pattern in the area. Regarding the development plan, the primary function of this review is really focused on the subdivision plat aspects. The single-use, single-phase development for detached dwellings on individual lots, as I've mentioned. And the only purpose of the development plan overlay is really to allow the flexibility of use for a private street. The existing lot is surrounded on three sides by public streets, but access to Walkerusa Drive and Eisenhower Drive are restricted. Access to the property is only permitted from that north side, terminating in a cul-de-sac with a private street that extends to the northeast, providing access to the townhouse development with a single outlet. This project's been designed with a secondary emergency access only from Walkerusa Drive to Parker Circle. This provides the necessary looped access to that area, but otherwise preserves the access restrictions intended for the property. Project includes the dedication of right-of-way for Eisenhower Drive. This is a plat aspect, which is a collector's street. The additional right-of-way would be collected on the west side of Eisenhower Drive when that property is developed in the future. The project also includes a variance to reduce the right-of-way width for Walkerusa Drive. That street was designed and constructed prior to the current arterial street design standards. There are existing utilities along the public street and an existing sidewalk. There's no planned widening of Walkerusa Drive in this particular street segment. And the city engineer supported the request for the variance. That is part of that plating action. This action this evening is to consider the rezoning from the PCD to the RS5 with the PD overlay to consider the preliminary development plan for the proposed residential development and to consider approving the variance to reduce the right-of-way width for Walkerusa Drive as shown on the preliminary development plan drawing. These items would then be forwarded to the City Commission for their consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions about the project and I believe the applicant is on the call as well.
Thank you, Sandy. David Carter, Chair. I don't have the list of names to call on the applicant, but does the applicant like to follow up with Sandy's comments?
Yes, Chris Storm with Storm Engineering representing the applicant tonight, which is CP Property Holdings LLC. Joining me tonight is Chris Earl and Pat McCandless. Sandy did a great job presenting the issues associated with this project. We are here to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Storm. David Carter, Chair. With that, we have time for a public comment. And do we have anyone who is here to speak on this item? And if so, you have three minutes. And I think, Kyle, are you going to be moderating public comment?
Okay, with planning, yes, this would be the appropriate time if you are here to speak on this item to use the raise your hand feature. I'll be looking at the participants pane and I will note anybody at this time. And I am seeing no hands being raised.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. David Carter, Chair. With that, I will turn it over to the Commission. Does anybody have any questions for?
Okay, with planning, I just had a hand go up.
Very good. Okay. Please identify them.
I, Kyle Kobe, with planning, the hand just went right back down. It was, I'm having trouble reading. I can see Bruce. Please, sorry about the pronunciation there.
If you're the person who raised your hand to speak on this item, please feel free to identify yourself. Unless it was a mistake. In which case, we can continue. Okay, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the, to the Commission. Does anybody have any questions for staff or for the applicant? I, okay, Commissioner Willie.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner, I had a question for either staff or the applicant about the private road. Who, so who pays to maintain that? Usually we see them in larger developments or something, and this is a fairly small number of houses. Does the burden of upkeep on that road then fall to the nine lots? And I imagine Mr. Storm can probably answer that for me.
I'd be happy to take that. Yes, it will fall on the owners of the lot. There'll be homeowners association form there and those owners will be responsible for maintaining that road. Costs associated with it and snow removal and all those things that the city would typically do on a public street.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Storm. David Carter, Chair. Any other questions? I guess I have a question. I suppose it's for, for staff. So with the construction of the private road, the existing traffic circle there, which doesn't really serve much else, does it? There are no, no alterations to the existing traffic plan that are, that are planned. Is that, is that correct?
Sandy Day, Planning Staff, that's correct at this point.
Okay, thanks, Sandy. David Carter, Chair. So the only people expected to use that road would be the people on, who, who, who live on that, in those properties. Is that also correct?
Sandy Day, Planning Office, yes, certainly the residents, but any normal residential delivery, that kind of thing would, would also have access to that private street.
Okay, thank you, David Carter, Chair. I, just the, the number of roads, the configuration of traffic seems a little bit complicated for a fairly small development right there. It was just something that I observed driving around there. Any, any other questions, comments, motions from, from Commission? Commissioner Willie?
Couple of quick questions also from Mr. Storm. Does the, the private road then have to be developed to regular city standards with stormwater collection and all that? Or are there kind of a lesser number, a lesser standard that can be, can be done on that road that would be easier to upkeep for the residents there?
Chris Storm, representing the applicant. The roadway, which is Westwood Hills way, will be designed to city standards. That's a requirement for all private streets and the storm sewer and the utilities and the sidewalk along it. All to city standards. That's a requirement of a private road and that's the intention with this project.
Thank you. Quick follow-up if I may, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely, please.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. And the, the emergency access road, I imagine that that will serve not only this new neighborhood, but also the existing larger townhome neighborhood. Is there any cost help with developing that road or is that all also on the burden of this small project?
Chris Storm, representing the applicant. With that, I'll ask Chris or Pat if they want to. I'm not involved with, I know there's been several meetings with the Master HOA and then the enclave, which is the private area to the north. There's been discussions, but I haven't been part of those, so I'm going to defer that to the owners, owners with that.
Hi, Chris Earl, one of the owners. There, could you repeat the question specifically? Is it about cost share of the fire access? Yeah. There is some, there's a financial agreement between the applicant and the master HOA. As relates to that, some of the extra cost of putting in the fire access and it will serve also the townhome HOA, which I think has roughly 65 residences, which no longer meets code, which is why the fire access was required for this project. So this project will in turn benefit the, the enclave, which is the 65, because they will not have fire access. Or secondary fire access, I should say.
Thank you.
David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Willie, does that, that satisfies your questions? Fantastic. I would just like to call attention to one question that we got from a member of the public about open space, public space or parks. Obviously, you know, a park per se is, isn't, isn't part of the plan here. The, the space between the public street and the, and the, and the private drive. Mr. Storm, could you speak to sort of the purpose of that space? Does it, do you see that as meeting any kind of open space or park-like function?
That, that area, I believe it's track day, was included in the open space requirements because of the PD overlay. And what's actually happened there, earlier you discussed kind of the bulb. There's actually, that's kind of the mail collection point and distribution point for the enclave and it'll be for these houses too. We're working with the city on the actual design of that, but that's kind of a focal point for the neighbors there to collect their mail and that type of stuff. So with the sidewalks and kind of the parking area, that's kind of being restructured to the east. I mean, that'd definitely be part of the open space, but there is no plan for like what I would call playground equipment. And then you also have walking trails that are part of the overall master plan in the detention areas to the east of this development too.
Okay, thank you very much, David Carter, Chair. Other questions from Commissioners? Any further comment from Commissioners? Any motions from Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, if I may, Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. I just wanted to call a note that there are three required motions on the two items. The one motion will require approval and a variance consideration, while the other one just has the recommendation item in there. So just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that there was three involved on two cases in this instance.
Thank you. Just to clarify, David Carter, Chair, just to clarify, the first item is the one that requires two motions. Or does it just require the variance provision within the single motion?
The zoning requires just the one motion for the recommendation. For the item number two, it requires the approval and the approval of the variance.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. That'll turn it back to the Commission. Any, any further questions, clarifications? Commissioner Sands?
Rob Sands, Plating Commissioner, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to recommend approval of the request to rezone approximately 2.607 acres from Land Commercial Development District to RS5 PD district based on the findings of fact presented in the staff report and forwarded to the City Commission with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Sands. David Carter, Chair, do I have a second? Commissioner Ashworth. And any further discussion? Okay, Jeff, could I ask you to read the roll, please?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director, Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. Would anyone care to make a motion on the second item? Or does anyone have any further questions about the second item? Commissioner Sands?
I'll wait for questions. I'm sorry I jumped the gun.
That's quite all right. I think we've done a lot of waiting. Does anybody have any other questions? All right, Commissioner Sands, I think you're out.
Rob Sands, Plating Commissioner, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of PDP 20-00420 Westwood Hills Place Preliminary Development Plan based upon the findings of fact found in the by the staff report and forward that recommendation for approval to the City Commission subject to conditions listed one and two below.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Sands. David Carter, Chair, do I have a second? Commissioner, Commissioner Ashworth again. And any further discussion? Okay, Jeff, could I ask you to read the roll, please?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Sands, would you care to make the final motion?
Sure. Rob Sands, Plating Commissioner, I recommend approval of the variance to reduce the right-of-way from 150 feet to 100 feet as shown on the preliminary development plan drawing for Walkerusa Drive right-of-way.
Thank you, Commissioner Sands. David Carter, Chair, do I have a second? Commissioner Ashworth. And any further discussion? Okay, Jeff, could I ask you to read the roll, please?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director, Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Very good. Thanks, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. That brings us to item three. Considering approving a request to rezone approximately 20 acres of the southwest corner of the intersection of North 400 and East 2300 roads from Ag 1 to Ag 2. And let's see, Mary, I believe you're going to be presenting to us on this one?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Mary Miller, City-County Planner. And as you mentioned, this rezoning request is for 20 acres in the southwest corner of North 400 and East 2300 roads from the Ag 1 Agricultural District to the Ag 2 Transitional Agricultural District. The property is located in the southeastern portion of the county. It is not within an urban growth area or within three miles of any city. The property currently contains 60 acres with frontage on both North 400 Road and East 2300 Road. And the applicant is requesting rezoning of 20 acres with frontage on North 400 Road so that it can be divided with a certificate of survey into two 10-acre rural development parcels. The remaining 40 acres would remain in agricultural production. Without the rezoning, one residence would be possible on this 20 acres. Rezoning to the Ag 2 District would permit 10-acre parcels and two residences would be possible. And as always, we review our zoning requests with the review criteria, which are the golden factors. And as shown in figure one on page three of the staff report, the subject property is bounded by Ag 2 zoning on the west and on the east. And in this graphic, there is, there was a mapping error. The parcel marked with a star was shown with Ag 1 zoning, but this has since been corrected on our mapping. This property had less than 20 acres when the zoning regulations went into effect in February of 2020. And the zoning converted to Ag 2. And so that has been revised. So we have Ag 2 zoning on both the east and the west. The uses along North 400 Road in this area are single-family residential, which is the proposed use for this property. The proposed Ag 2 zoning and the rural residential use is consistent and compatible with surrounding uses and zoning. For the purpose of this review, the area is considered to be properties within approximately one mile of the subject property. And the area is shown in figure three on page five of the staff report. It's bounded on the north by North 500 Road, on the south by North 300 Road, on the east by East 2400 Road, which is also the boundary of the county, the eastern boundary, and on the west by East 2200 Road. This area is characterized by woodland and wooded stream corridors, agricultural land and rural residential properties. It contains a mix of Ag 1 and Ag 2 zoning with the Ag 2 District containing parcels less than 20 acres and the Ag 1 zoning containing the parcels with 20 acres or more. The northeast and southwest quadrant of the intersection The northeast and southwest quadrant of the intersection of North 400 and East 2300 roads are the more developed quadrants, while the other quadrants maintain larger parcels. And the proposed land division would be in the southwest quadrant. Figure four on page six of the staff report shows the Ag 2 zone properties in the area with and without the proposed rezoning. The development pattern of the area has smaller parcels located along the interior roadways, that being North 400 and East 2300, while larger parcels are located in the interior of the quadrants or along the perimeter roads. The proposed land division would maintain this development pattern. The proposed rezoning would be compatible with and would maintain the character of the area. The subject property is well-suited to the uses which are permitted in the current Ag 1 District. It's also well-suited to the uses which permitted in the Ag 2 District as the permitted uses in both districts are very similar. There are some uses permitted in the Ag 2 District that are not permitted in Ag 1. These require approval of a conditional use permit. Therefore, rezoning to the Ag 2 District is not expected to have any detrimental effect on nearby properties due to the similarity of uses permitted in both districts. The public hearing process required for the review of a conditional use permit and the development that's being proposed, the two residential properties rather than the one that would be permitted under the current zoning. Per code, environmentally sensitive lands include regulatory floodway, floodway fringe, jurisdictional wetlands, stream corridors, native and restored prairie that are voluntarily listed for protection, prime farmland, stands of mature trees, and archaeological or historic sites. Of these, the property contains a wetland identified by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services as shown in figure five on page nine of the staff report. The comprehensive plan adds high-quality agricultural soils, Class 1 and 2 soils, and steep slopes to this list. Small areas of steep slopes are present on the property. The subdivision regulations contain measures to protect environmentally sensitive lands when property is divided. The amount of environmentally sensitive lands present on the site is well under 40% of the total site and could be protected as noted in the subdivision regulations. Rezoning the property to the Ag 2 District would not adversely affect the environmentally sensitive lands present on the site, the wetland, and the steep slopes as protection measures provided in subdivision regulations would require these be located outside the building envelope. The rezoning would allow an additional residence along North 400 Road, an area which currently contains residential development. Approval of the rezoning would not have a detrimental impact on the public health, safety, or welfare as the development would be occurring in an area which contains residential development, maintaining the development pattern that provides for efficiency of utility service, road maintenance, and fire protection. When rezoning is requested from the Ag 1 District, the suitability of the property for agricultural uses is reviewed. This criterion was added when the zoning regulations were revised early this year. Saff is working with NRCS, Natural Resource Conservation Services, to develop an automated LESA system, and that's a land evaluation site assessment system. And this would provide a score. It'd be an automated system that would provide a score for the agricultural productivity of a property and assign a ranking, such as high importance for protection, medium importance for protection, low importance, and et cetera. While this system is being developed, we are doing the review manually. This allows us to become more familiar with the elements being included so that we can tailor the LESA system for Douglas County. Figure six on page 11 of the staff report notes the types of soils present on the site. And the Department of Agriculture recommends that government, as well as individuals, encourage and facilitate the wise use of prime farmland. There is no prime farmland present on the site. Figure seven, page 12 of the staff report, shows the National Commodity Crop Index being between 50 and 60, 50 and 60 for the subject property. And this index rate ranks productivity on a scale between 0 and 100. So production levels for this site are considered average or slightly above. The property is suitable for agricultural production, but does not contain prime farmland or high-quality agricultural soils. The productivity figures indicate that the property has slightly over-average production. The rezoning would remove the 20 acres from the Ag 1 District that is suitable for agriculture, but that would not rank high for protection based on the metrics being established. Plan 2040 includes several goals related to rural development, and one is the protection of high-quality agricultural soils and continuous agricultural lands. Another is the provision of housing opportunities while maintaining the rural character and minimizing the non-agricultural residential development outside the urban growth area. The staff report reviewed the agricultural nature of the area property and the compatibility of the proposed zoning and land division with the character of the area. And the conclusion of the review is that the requested rezoning is compliant with the recommendations in the comprehensive plan. One letter from a nearby property owner was included in your packet. The neighbor has concerns with the amount of traffic on the roads and the condition of the roads. This is a township road, North 400 Road. The letter writer noted that agiturism uses in the area and the intermodal facility at Edgerton are principal sources of this traffic. One additional residence would be possible with this rezoning. In staff's opinion, the amount of traffic generated by one additional residence shouldn't have an impact on the traffic and the wear on the road. But I contacted the county engineer and the Palmyra Township trustee for information. I talked with Don Towns, the Palmyra Township trustee, about the rezoning, and he indicated he had no concerns with the addition of one or two residences on North 400 Road. I was not able to get in contact with the county engineer yet, so I haven't got his input on that. Saff recommends approval of this rezoning request for 20 acres and forwarding that to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I don't know for sure if the applicant is here or not. I see that he is.
Okay, thank you, Mary, David Carter, Chair. Mr. Carlin, would you care to follow up on Mary's comments with any of your own?
Aaron Carlin, applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Carlin, David Carter, Chair. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak on this item? If so, please use your raise hand feature and Kyle will recognize you. And Kyle, if there are no no one assembled, can you tell me if there's anyone assembled in in the in the chamber? I'm sorry, please go ahead.
Kyle Covey with planning, yes, we have several members of the public here to speak on this item.
Very good. Thank you. And I forgive you, this is we what, sharing remotely while we have in multiple people in person is a little new for me, so I'm just going to ask your assistance, Kyle. Good evening. If we could ask you to sign in and you have three minutes to speak.
Yes, my name is Belcher, and I live right
Are you able to hear that? Kyle Covey with planning?
Yes, you can hear just fine. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, the owner of the property, his assertion was all garbled. Can he repeat that, please? Because I didn't hear a single audible word.
I don't think none of us did.
Kyle, did you understand that?
So David Carter, Chair, if I I understood him to say he had no additional comments, but he was happy to answer any questions. Mr. Carlin, is that, did I understand you correctly? Okay, thank you. So, but please, sir, you've got you've got three minutes. So if you have comments, I'd ask you to please make them.
Okay, hey, thanks a lot. Nice to meet you, Mr. Carlin. My concern or one of my concerns is the traffic. But the major concern would be you say that you want to put in two houses in that area. That's fine. I don't care. But do you know what the water line size is there?
Sir, I would forgive me, David Carter, Chair, I would just ask you to go ahead and make your state your concerns, and then we'll go ahead and ask questions. That'll be a more efficient way to conduct.
Okay, great. You know, I am not knowledgeable of this stuff.
That's quite interesting.
Limits on the property as far as development acreage. And dust control is a concern if this goes beyond residential. If it is an Ag or if it is a commercial-type property, then we've got dust throughout the year, even in the wintertime. Let's see. Regarding regarding the water again, our water pressure is going to drop if he hooks on. That's only a four-inch main out there. We've got concerns about security in the area. I see a sheriff roll by maybe once every six weeks. Okay. What was you saying? Yes, speed limits are a concern out in that area. Even though it's just two more houses, where you're going to have at least two cars, maybe four, up to six or whatever. So speed limit is a concern. There is a visibility problem at that corner west, or excuse me, east of where your proposal is. That needs to be changed to a four-way stop. Another issue, fire hydrants. Who's going to pay for these developments of the utilities and things of that nature? Is it going to be shared by the property owners? And I think that's oh, is there a development plan for that 20 acres? That's where we can see. And the other 40 acres that's adjoining this? That's my concerns, although there are a few more. But that's fine. Thank you for your time. Nice to see you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your comments. David Carter, Chair, do we have anyone else who wishes to speak? Thank you. Hi, if you could please state your name and sign in.
Jeff Craig, Planning and Development Services Director. We don't actually have a sign-in sheet under the current
Oh, forgive me. Just state your name, then, please, sorry.
My name is Trudy Winger, and we live in the property just adjacent to the property here in discussion. So we are east of his property, the first house. Our concern or question is there is a lot of runoff that during rainy season stuff that will come down that hill into a supposedly dry pond that then would come into our property down to the creek, and there's erosion involved. With the development of any more houses or property on there, what impact is that going to have going forward for us and our creek and the erosion that is going on down in that area? Second of all, like everybody else has said, 400 Road is horrible. With more, while you say there won't be a whole lot of other cars or great impact to it, I question that. We have no maintenance done on that road, therefore, by adding construction vehicles going down that road is going to tear that road up even more. And the houses that could be built or potentially could be built are going to draw more down that road. So my question to be to the county is, what is the plans to be to improve 400 Road so that these construction vehicles, if they should occur, aren't going to tear that road up even more because it is not maintained? And I know we hear it's Palmyra's issue or it's somebody else's issue, but you are the county we live in. What's going to happen with that road? Then the other question or concern I have is are there the existing plans or thoughts as to what they want to do once they split this into two 10-acre plots? Is that something that right now all they want to do is split to 10 and hold? Or is that something that they have a plan already that they're going to split to 10, and they already know that there's going to be development on each set of 10? And what is that development going to be? So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winger, David Carter, Chair. Anyone else who would like to speak?
My name's Ron Hughes. I've got joining property to not the 20 you're trying to develop, but the the rest of the 40 acres concerned. I don't know if this would be a door opener to develop the rest of it, but I'd like to hear more about it by the owner, developer, whoever's in charge because of in my eyes, absolutely not be divided. It's I tried to divide some of this a year and a half ago with the property that I live at, and it was no discussion. And I feel that a year and a half ago, things hadn't changed that much. So maybe I don't have a problem with 15 to 20, like it's always been. Acres, I mean. But now we're dropping it down. So our next week or six months from now, we're going to drop her down the rest of it to 10 acres. And I've got a big concern because I've seen a lot of property developed that way. Not in Douglas, all of it, Johnson and Franklin. So we own property quite a ways around, and we farm, and I raise cattle. I deal with dogs constantly. I know you can dispose of them legally, but I like to keep good neighbors, you know. So two two neighbors, maybe two dogs, but I'm thinking down the road. So I would like to be explained to, and if this if we're going to start chopping up all this land and agriculture, then I'd like to hear about it. So and I'm sure the other residents also. And what I've heard, what they've talked about, I have the same same worries on it. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. David Carter, Chair, anyone else who would like to speak on this item?
Kyle Covey with planning, I don't think we have anybody else who wishes to speak on this item.
All right. Thank you very much. So, Mr. Carlin, you have five minutes. I think one thing, one of the folks mentioned, the audio on your connection did seem to be troublesome. You might want to test that. But you have five minutes to respond to the concerns that were raised by the public.
Can you hear them all right first?
Yeah, I think it's a if you're close enough to the speaker, we can hear you fine.
I didn't catch all those. Kyle, is there a list that you can read off?
Kyle Covey with planning, I'm sorry, I didn't, I was not able to hear all of that.
So Mr. Carlin, David Carter, Chair, I've took some notes. I've got not specifics, but the items were traffic, dust, water pressure, visibility. I think there was a question about a four-way stop, which of course is not in your control, but fire hydrants, what your plans are for development beyond these two, these two parcels. Concern about runoff and erosion. And I think that's it. Last gentleman mentioned dogs and, you know, concern about you know, I guess, increasing increasing pressure from from new residents.
Jeff Craig, Planning and Development Services Director. One item that we had tracked on was also related to road maintenance, which would be a little bit outside the purview of the application, but just wanted that to be on the record.
Thank you, Jeff, David Carter, Chair, Mr. Carlin.
You, Aaron Carlin, applicant. Seems like some of those are kind of outside the scope of what I can control, but I can speak to the points that are raised that are in my control, specifically the planning of the the lot. So we have 40 acres split off from the 20 which is in question. That is on the south of the lot. It's going to be sold as a homestead. We're planning to build a house and move there probably within about five, six years. The north 20, which is the part on question, we'd be looking to rezone and then split into two 10-acre or single residential homesteads as well. There's no commercial or alternate house developments planned for that area. For the dogs, again, I can only control what's in my scope. We have one dog, and we don't plan to get any more. Could you repeat some of the other concerns, please?
Forgive me, I was on mute. I have of course, around dust, and we'll talk about, I think, talked to staff for road maintenance. Let's see, runoff and erosion and water pressure. I think one of the gentlemen asked if you were aware of the water load, or I could get someone or I could get someone else with the, with the engineering expertise to correct me.
Jeff Crick, Playing and Development Services Director, if I may, Mr. Chair. We're in the room. We can't hear the audio from Mr. Carlin. It's kind of coming in and out on us, and we can't actually understand a lot of the response at that point in time. So, I hate to, hate to press on that one, but we're not able to hear in the room on that item.
Okay, I'm going to call a point of order here and just ask for some, some guidance. Because I'm able, I think I'm able to understand barely what Mr. Carlin is saying because I'm wearing headphones. I can understand on the PA that you'd have more difficulty. I guess, Mr. Carlin, I would just ask, if we can try one more time with you speaking into the speaker. I think your connection is, is rough enough that it, it, it mutes, it almost mutes you.
Apologies for that.
Let's try it. If you just speak directly into the microphone, let's keep our fingers crossed and see if we can understand you better. Forgive me for interrupting. Yeah, it's not, it's not improving. And so, David Carter, Chair, Jeff or Kyle, would it be worth asking Mr. Carlin to, to phone in? I know Commissioner Shanklin has had some challenges in the past. Is that, that seem like a viable opportunity, alternative? Perhaps we could, I know it's, it doesn't follow the bylaws. Would it make sense to allow, allow the, well, I think we should probably pause for long enough for him to dial in because we can't go to Commissioner questions if the applicant is not able to answer this. Is that correct?
Yeah, Crick, Playing and Development Services Director, I would concur with that, Mr. Chair. I think at the moment, if we could hold for a second and allow Mr. Carlin to connect through the phone or a different means, and we can hold for a moment just to give him the opportunity to do that. So, we'll just, if, if it's okay with the chair, we can give him a few minutes to make those connection items possible.
Absolutely. So, I don't know if it's appropriate. It's pretty early to call a, to call a recess. We haven't even been in session for, for an hour. So, I would just ask folks to hold on for a couple of minutes while Mr. Carlin phones in. Mr. Carlin, is that okay? And give us a thumbs up. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd be okay with the recess while we wait.
Very good. Let's go ahead and call a, a four-minute recess to give Mr. Carlin a chance to dial in. We'll reassemble at 7:27. Thanks.
Hello, Kyle, can you hear me? Kyle Kobe with planning. Did you, did you hear the last? I'm not sure if I, I might have been on mute without realizing it.
I can hear you now. Thank you.
Could you, could you go ahead and just sort of speak for a little bit so that we can verify your connection?
Sure, no problem.
It doesn't matter what you say. I just want to make sure that it'll, it'll keep a solid connection.
Gotcha. I'll just kind of rehash what I said previously. The 40 acres to the south is going to be held as a single family residence. And the 20 acres in question is going to be rezoned and then split into two 10-acre plots with development of only single-family residences on both the 10-acre plots.
Thank you, Mr. Carlin. Forgive me, David Carter, Chair here. Since we're still in recess, I'm going to just ask you to hold off on that. I'm glad that you've, we've gotten your audio fixed. So, but I'd like to just wait until the folks are back and assembled and can hear your response.
No problem.
Thanks a lot. So, I guess we could have done with less than four minutes. I'm glad, I'm glad it didn't take that. Okay, as soon as we get everybody back, we'll be able to continue. Just ask folks to turn on your cameras as soon as you're settled. I think we have our commissioners back. So, Mr. Carlin, thank you very much for taking the time to connect your audio. I think especially the folks assembled in the, in the chamber will appreciate being able to hear your responses. So, you were talking about your plans for, for the land. If, if you could repeat that now, please.
No problem. Aaron Carlin, applicant. Apologies for the, the bad connection previously. Yes, for the, the 40 acres, there was a question of what that would be dis, for. Our plan is to keep that as a single-family residence for the whole 40 acres. And then the 20 acres would be subdivided into two. And those would be both put up for sale for single-family residences along the, the 400 Road. I think there was a question about dogs. We only have one dog. We don't plan to get more. I think beyond that's kind of out of scope for us. I think a lot of the other ones, the, the erosion control and, and dust. Kind of again, beyond the, the scope, the, the water line that runs along North 400. We haven't requisitioned to see the two additions to that line. We only know that we're, we could get approval for one. We wanted to go through this process before requesting to see if there is two spots available and see what that would do to the, the pressure. So, we don't have approval, but that would be the next step. Could you read off if there's any other questions?
Sure, I'll just recap. David Carter, Chair. So, we talked about traffic, dust, there was the, the road maintenance, visibility, of course, four-way stop, fire hydrants, none of these directly related to you, but we can come back to these, turning toward staff, runoff and erosion. So, if there, so, Mr. Carlin, if you don't have any further comments, I think we'll be able to address these other issues in questions from the, from the commission.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David Carter, Chair, I'll turn this over to the commission then for any questions for the applicant or for staff. Commissioner Ashworth.
Planning Commissioner Sharon Ashworth. I'll just get us started here. Just to touch base, question for staff about the erosion for down slope properties. When a building permit and plan is submitted, is that something that would be taken into consideration with the, that, at that point in the development?
I don't believe they typically look at that, but if you make them aware of it, then they'll, they'll, they will look into it, the county engineer, the former stormwater engineer. So, while we don't require stormwater management currently on properties, if they're aware of an issue, they could look into it and make recommendations so that the applicant could control the stormwater on their own property. You know, it becomes a civil issue if you let it go on. So, it would benefit everyone for them to check into it during the building permit process. And Tanya Voight, the zoning director for Douglas County is present. And so, she can make a note. She is, she works with them when they process the building permits.
Thank you, Ms. Voight. Would you, David Carter, Chair, would you care to make any comments?
Just that in the new zoning regulations, when we adopted those, we also increased the setbacks from neighboring property lines. And part of the reason we did that is because we were receiving so many complaints in relationship to building pad sites that were built very close to the neighboring property lines. And then that was causing quite, quite a bit of drainage issues on other, other people's property. So, that what once was a 10-foot side yard setback is now a 30-foot side yard setback, and we are finding some success in that, that that is getting, if someone's, you know, building a site, leveling a site, moving dirt around for a pad site for a building, that it's far enough from a property owner that we are seeing that we're not receiving as many complaints on new construction just in relationship to drainage affecting another property owner. If there is a serious concern, we would want to know about that ahead of time because we will not withhold a building permit based solely on some, another property owner having drainage concerns. Because what we look at with a building permit are, you know, strictly the zoning regulations, which don't include drainage. So, we would want to try to work that out, you know, prior to a building permit and a property owner purchasing a piece of property, thinking they're going to build on it. And then, you know, other people hoping that we're going to hold a permit because we will not based solely on drainage. So, we would want to probably work with the owner of the property and, and have an engineer, you know, go out on the site, look at the site prior to them advertising the lot for sale. We could create a building envelope if it were necessary. You know, just to kind of mitigate some of those steep slopes or fill or that type of thing that can negatively impact another property owner.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Voight. David Carter, Chair, other questions from commissioners? Well, then I'll go ahead and pose a question, confessing my ignorance. Oh, Commissioner Ashworth, I did not see your hand. I apologize.
I'm sorry, Planning Commissioner Ashworth, I just want to turn it over to Commissioner Shanklin, who had his hand raised, but you didn't, missed it. So, I just...
There, I am so sorry. Apologize. Thank you for calling my attention to that.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashworth. Greg Shanklin, Planning Commissioner. I have a very general concern about loss of agricultural land. And given that the 20 acres under consideration here are considered to be above-average production as well as of statewide importance and are charged as to minimize the loss of agricultural land and to evaluate the loss of land for adequacy of the, you know, the total agricultural land as a whole. I'm just wondering how we reconcile that in order to release this land to ultimately, you know, further development. So, I guess that question is for, for Mary.
Yeah, you know, Mary Miller, City County Planner. Basically, we look at all the golden factors, and so we look into compatibility. We look at with the land evaluation and site assessment. One thing you look at is what is the surrounding property development like? So, if you have an agricultural parcel next to another agricultural parcel, that's more likely to be contiguous agricultural land. If you have an agricultural parcel next to a residential parcel, like the 20 acres is bounded on both sides by residences, then we could see that being a reason that that would be more suitable for residential development. And I think it is a balancing act, you know? It'd almost be better if the, if there were more strict guidelines. And that's what we hope to create with our LISA system, is perhaps set a, a certain productivity score. We're below that, it doesn't matter where you're located, you know, we would protect it. We don't have that developed yet, so we're just trying to balance. You know, looking at where those 20 acres are and the kind of development that's along North 400 Road, that it would be in keeping with that. Now, the southern 40 acres, if it came in for rezoning, it would not be compatible. I mean, the area around it is agricultural land. And so, I think we would look more at the fact that it's suitable for agriculture and that the size of the land and the surrounding area, we wouldn't recommend rezoning for that. So, it's, it's kind of a subjective balancing act to decide just how to come down on the end.
May I follow?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Shanklin. I, that is a very slippery slope, it appears to me, because you'll always have Ag 1 properties that are in the, you know, at least in Douglas County, near other Ag 2 or even more further developed residential property. So, once you started on the path, it seems like you are, you know, you're going to continue.
You could.
Sorry, I just wonder...
You do set a precedent, I think, with every decision. For instance, if we moved ahead with this, I think the precedent would be if you have a 20-acre parcel that you're interested in rezoning and it's bounded by residential, and it's below a certain level of productivity, and it doesn't have any Class 1 or 2 soils, and it doesn't have any prime farmland, we might both say that seems a reasonable candidate for rezoning. And so, yeah, I think each, every decision will create something to build upon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Commissioner Shanklin. David Carter, Chair, Commissioner Willie.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. I want to look at kind of the development pattern of the, the 80 acres here. So, there's in the northeast corner, a 5-acre parcel that I believe the neighbors may be able to tell me, was that the old schoolhouse that was there? I guess I would throw that as a question to Ms. Winger or Mr. Belcher. That, that what's now a house in that northeast corner of the property or the... Someone will have to translate, I'm afraid.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, David Carter, Chair, are you saying that, that, that it was the old schoolhouse?
Kyle with planning, give us just a second.
Very good.
Trudy Winger, yes, I believe that was the old schoolhouse.
Hey, thank you. Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. So, following up, there's an 80 acres of the old schoolhouse in the corner. And then there was the 75 acres, which Mary, I believe you can tell us, was until just this year, a single property of 70 acres. And there was a homestead exemption for the 15 acres along East 2300 Road that was just processed this year. Is that right?
I believe that homestead exemption was processed in 2019. And that's why our zoning maps had to be corrected because we did not show it as Ag 2. But the homestead exemption went through in 2019. Right, it was very recent.
So, Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner, we had one residence with, which is in the old schoolhouse, one residence along 2300 Road. Those are two residences existing now. What's being proposed is to split a southern 40 acres for one residence, the northern 20 acres into two residents, knowing that the southern 40 acres can be split into two residences without a public process because that does not require a zoning change. So, we could very quickly go from two residences on 80 acres to one, two, three, four, five, six residents, residences. Pretty quickly, just with this decision, five for sure, six very possibly without any additional public... pretty quickly, just with this decision. Five for sure, six very possibly without any additional public process. So when we hear from the neighbor that says, in the last 44 years, we've gone from, and these were his numbers, I have not verified it, you know, five homes in a two-mile stretch to 25 or 30 homes, this is how it happens. So this is what we talked about when we made Plan 2040 and said that we wanted to minimize non-agricultural residences in the county. This is the way that happens. I know we've had some of these, we've passed them through. But we, and we made these, this new zoning regulations in order to have the tool to talk about what happens when we make lots splits and how many lots do we need, and we have not had that discussion. I don't know when we will, because we aren't having our mid-month meetings to discuss some of these larger items. But this gives me a lot of pause, because this is a development pattern, and it's happening very quickly, even just on this one parcel in this one neighborhood. So that's comment number one. I'll let somebody else talk for a while.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter Chair, does anyone have Commissioner Carpenter?
Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner, I have to join Commissioner Shanklin's concern about the use of the ag land here. I mean, there are studies out there that are projecting impacts of climate change, you know, 50 years into the future, and one I saw actually rates every county in the United States for issues. And our particular county is probably around 2050, we're going to lose about 50% of the ag productivity in our county just because of the shifts in climate. Second point is this, you know, I've driven out through this area, and I never actually realized how close I was to Edgerton and Gardner. I mean, we're only about a mile, mile and a half away from there. And so these particular farmlands are sandwiched between Baldwin City, Edgerton, and Gardner. And we know what's happening in Edgerton and Gardner, they're expanding, they're looking for additional residential space. And we're going to have to really figure out what we're going to do to try to protect the farmlands down in this part of the county because of those expanding pressures. So I, with all that, I, I'm having a hard time here, because when you also look at the maps, there's quite a number of residents around there. You know, then you add in all these other issues, this is still a township road, you know, supported by Palmyra Township. It's a rural water district, I mean, the pressures on these small governmental entities just keep growing. And I think they're reaching a breaking point also. So I know that we have our new rules and what's permitted and splits and stuff, but I think we really need to pause and have that conversation, and that Commissioner Willie has brought up, because it is one of those things that we've not been able to discuss for a while. We haven't had an opportunity since we've had these new county zoning regulations come in to even have a discussion. You know, we saw them, and we only had a Zoom meeting to really discuss them once or twice. And that's, in my mind, that's not really been adequate for us to really have a full grasp of the situation. And, you know, what we look at in this southeast section of the county may not apply to certain other sections of the county, but there are development pressures down there now that we need to think about.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Did you want to get any response from staff or anyone, or just observation?
I'd like not to keep turning myself off and on on Zoom, but Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner, I don't have anything specific right now. I just wanted to kind of throw out some observations and things I'm struggling with. And maybe Tanya or Mary will be able to weigh in after they hear what most of us have to say, because I don't have a very specific question.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. David Carter Chair, so I'm going to raise the question that I was about to raise when I cut off Commissioner Shanklin, and that was about the road maintenance. And I could use some clarification from staff, or perhaps from Commissioner Willie's experience, about, you know, as densities increase, you know, what is the evolution of accountability for road maintenance? Does it stay with the township until the land is incorporated? Or what's the, you know, I mean, how does one address the neighbor's valid concerns as long as this area remains unincorporated? And I guess I'll give staff a chance, a crack at that first, Mary or Jeff.
Someone else, the Mary Miller, City County Planner, someone else can probably follow up on me and provide more information. But if a road is a township road, then it's under their control unless if they, you can ask the county to take it over, and that would be a decision the county would have to make if they wanted to take over the maintenance of the roads. And I don't know how often they would do that. I think typically township roads are maintained by townships. They may have to raise taxes, you know, it sounds like, one thing I've noticed, the comments were that the ag tourism uses, there's a winery, there's an event center in the area, and that's creating a lot of traffic on these roads. And when we wrote the ag tourism regulations, we were trying to encourage them, but at the time, we thought if they're too successful and they create a lot of traffic, perhaps we should have a mechanism where they actually help pay for the maintenance like quarries do and other uses do, and that may be something we need to visit, because that's putting a stress on the townships. And I know some, I think it's Kanwaka Township or La Compton, it's La Compton Township, if there's a lot of traffic, they'll apply dust palladium, you know, if it's residential traffic. So it all depends upon the tax base of each township, what they're able to do. You know, some townships don't have that much resources, and so their maintenance is a little bit more spotty.
Thank you, Mary. David Carter Chair. Yeah, I guess that addresses my questions. Commissioner Ashworth, please.
Just that I was wondering, Commissioner Ashworth here, if Commissioner Willie could go through that division that she did of the various property again, in terms of how you expected that this might proceed? And if staff could comment on that projected division of land?
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner, sure. So I pulled up the graphic in front of me, which is very helpful. And back in the old days, we would have had this on the screen for everybody. So there, of the 80 acres that sits at that intersection between North 400 Road and East 2300 Road, currently there are two residences in that 80 acres, one parcel that is the old schoolhouse, one existing residence. So there's something called a homestead exemption, that if you, and I will defer to Tanya very soon, where if you have a single house that has existed for a long time, I'm sure there's a date to that, it can be split off without this kind of public process from the rest of the acreage, and then sold or maintained as a different parcel. So it looks like that that homestead exemption was split off in 2019. That home now has a different ownership from the parcel that we're looking at now. I don't know who the original owner was. So the parcel that's left is the 60 acres that's before us today, that 20 acres of that is being proposed to split into two lots. So now we've got the original two homes, the two homes that are being proposed tonight, and the applicant has said they'll build a home on the 40 acres. But the 40-acre parcel can be split into two 20-acre parcels without any public process, because it remains as Ag 2. So the possibility with this decision is to go from the current two residences to a potential six. And I would ask Tanya, Tanya Voight, to see if I got all that correct.
So I believe that this homestead actually predated the zoning regulation changes, because we actually took out the homestead option on Ag 1 property, which is properties over 20 acres. So if someone wanted to homestead to a smaller piece of property, I think you guys actually considered a rezon request similar, where the property was zoned Ag 1, they wanted to go down to 10 acres to homestead. That has been taken away in an effort to really be able to kind of manage the further subdivision of lots with the new regs. So what we had happening were property owners homesteading five or 10 acres, and then they would take the remaining land and go ahead and subdivide that to the maximum extent. So now at this point, that's been stopped. If you're zoned Ag 1 and you're over 20 acres, you would need to rezone if you want to be less than 20 acres. So I believe that this property, and Mary can correct me if I'm wrong, it must have come in under the old regs.
Thank you, Tanya. Let's see, Commissioner Ashworth, David Carter Chair, Commissioner Ashworth, does that address your questions?
Yes, Commissioner Ashworth, thank you very much.
Very good, thanks. Do we have any further questions, comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Willie.
The other comment I wanted to make was about land cover and why we have a lot of residences directly to the west. And again, it's very helpful that I have the visual in front of me, and I wish everyone else did also. There are great many small residences, Ag 2 properties directly to the west. And the reason that that is a reasonably appropriate use there is that it is entirely in trees and mostly cedar trees. So it was pasture that grew up into trees and is now absolutely not available for agricultural uses of any kind. Whereas the land that we're looking at tonight is all in either pasture or hay ground, I couldn't tell, I gave it a drive-by. It's also entirely in native grass. And that's, it didn't flag in terms of sensitive lands for us, presumably because it is not voluntarily listed as either prairie or restored prairie. It's hard for me to tell this time of year whether that's CRP or restored or a native prairie. I would say that it doesn't have any marks of having been farm ground, as far as it hasn't been terraced or significantly eroded, where I would think that they would take it out of production and put it into native grass. So it is entirely possible that this is an unplowed prairie here, but I don't know that for sure. But so my question for Mary, I assume that that doesn't flag to us at all because it's not voluntarily listed. Would that be correct?
That's correct. We can only require protection if they're voluntarily listed, and so that wasn't identified as a prairie.
Do we know anything of the history, Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner, or are we allowed to ask?
The Kansas Biological Survey usually checks into that for us. So for instance, if a land is being divided, they would let us know if there's prairie land on it. That way we can make sure we get it protected, keep it outside of the building envelope. They did not respond to this rezoning request, and I don't have my files up to pull up and see if, that I can recall if they did. They usually look and tell me if there's prairie, any native habitat, or any rare endangered species habitat. But we didn't get that information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Other questions? David Carter Chair. I guess I'll just speak from my perspective, what we've seen so far. I'm mindful of the concerns of the neighbors. We're seeing a lot of changes taking place in this area. The maintenance of the roads by the township, the maintenance of the water supply isn't, you know, is barely keeping up with the pressures in this area. And there's, you know, valid concern about, about, you know, the negative impact of that, the accumulated negative impact. On the other hand, it seems to me unfair for a single applicant to bear the burden of that, to be, to play the role of that straw that breaks the camel's back. I am, I, I have to ask, I guess this is for Jeff. It doesn't seem like we are in a position to be hearing about policy changes or recommending specific changes to practice anytime in the near future. So, so for Jeff, how would you envision Commissioner Willie's or Commissioner Shanklin's concerns being addressed, you know, in our purview or in the county commission's purview?
Jeff Crick, Planning Development Services Director, I believe I may have been out of the room during Commissioner Shanklin's comments. I'm not sure if I have the full scope of it, but Commissioner Shanklin, please correct me if I go awry on this one here. But I believe the question was related to large tracts of farmland being maintained and preserved. Am I correct in the lineage there?
Commissioner Shanklin, would you care to restate your concern?
The concern was generally loss of agricultural land, particularly in a circumstance where we've identified it to be of statewide importance and above-average productivity. And I also share the other concerns expressed about just the proliferation of rooftops in Douglas County when I think they ought to be maybe better directed towards within town in areas that are intended for growth.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanklin. So Jeff, there's, I'll turn back. How, how do we address these concerns in terms of policy and practice beyond the, you know, case by case petitions by residents to subdivide land?
Jeff Crick, Planning Development Services Director, in the case of a broader policy discussion like that, you would typically see those under the context of a text amendment or a comprehensive plan amendment, or both in some instances where you would have those broader philosophical discussions in the instances there, because it's not... I think a lot of the discussion is revolving around items that are, you know, while tied to this case, might extend beyond the boundaries of the portion being proposed for this evening here. I think that's a discussion that's going to come up probably in the next year, would be my hunch at this point in time. I think it's going to be a broader discussion, my mask is falling down, I'm trying to do it there. But it's, I think you're going to have to have that discussion, or to be, I think we're going to have to have that discussion as we go through it, because we're starting to see a lot of changes in the way that the new zoning code reacts, and the ways that the subdivision regulations react, and the code itself is not that old. So we're really starting to see those first applications to understand how it's going to move and kind of go through the processes, and we're seeing those items here. I think to Commissioner Shanklin's point, that broader discussion, kind of that more holistic look of it, I think is going to be on our near horizon in the future. But it is important noted that, you know, it is applicable in the case, but it is, you know, kind of keeping that motion that this is related to a single item that is being asked this evening. But I hope I addressed the question. I'm not sure if I've got the totality of it there. I do apologize for being out of the room for a moment. My apologies.
Not at all. Thank you, Jeff. David Carter Chair, you addressed my concern, because I'm, as I stated earlier, I have to confess my ignorance about this, about this, you know, this part of, you know, policy. So I thank you. So other questions coming from Commissioners? I'm sorry, Ms. Voight.
Can I ask a question too? Can we ask Mr. Carlin if that property is native prairie?
Mr. Carlin? Did you happen to get?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Aaron Carlin, applicant, it is not native prairie. The 20 acres was, has partially terraced. And according to the realtor, it's been vacant for two years, but it has not been in cropland for over 15.
Thank you, Ms. Voight.
Yeah, Tanya Voight, zoning director. Mr. Carlin, is the intention that you are planning to reside on the property, and that would be the 40 acres, and then you would like to sell the two 10 acres, but you do plan to live on the property?
That is correct.
So from a density standpoint with the zoning regulations, obviously, Mr. Carlin, at this point with the land splits he has now, he can get three building permits today at our office in 20-acre increments. So I think, and that, you know, would be administratively approved, he would maintain his Ag 1 zoning. So from a perspective, from... So from a perspective, from, you know, the zoning and code side, you know, maybe there's an option for Mr. Carlin to agree to maintain that density of one house on 40. Because we can't guarantee that. Mr. Carlin then can sell that later and increase that density, obviously. But right now, with what he's proposing, he really does meet the one house per 20-acre density, even though he's asking for two houses on a 20. So that maybe muddled the water a little bit and complicated things a little bit. But I think in the grand scheme of things, it's important to point out that he can apply for three building permits on 60 acres. And what we need to do is ask Mr. Carlin if you truly want to develop two 20-acre lots, that you're going to put, you know, all of your land outside of your building envelope on the 40 in an agricultural protection agreement. Because we have that option with the new zoning regulations. When someone voluntarily puts their land in an agricultural protection agreement, it cannot be built on in the future. It cannot be developed. It cannot have more houses.
Thank you, Ms. Voight. David Carter, Chair. Other, other, other questions, considerations from commissioners? Commissioner Willie, please.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. Can we ask Mr. Carlin how he, to respond to that proposition? If he would be interested in being, being allowed these two 10-acre lots on the north and then filing for agricultural, agricultural preservation? Tell me again, Tanya, to preserve the rest of that 40 acres?
Mr. Carlin, would you care to respond to Commissioner Willie's question? If you would consider that? Please go ahead.
Yes, I'd be willing to entertain that and discuss more on the preservation.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. Yeah, I'm afraid what we're doing is we're putting the applicant on the spot here tonight to make a decision one way or another. Because what we've had pop up is we just, the longer we go, the more policy implications jump out at us. But if the applicant is willing to have that discussion with county staff, with Tanya and Voight, and consider other options. You know, one of our options is to defer this matter to allow him the opportunity to explore these options and to think about it. And I believe probably with the publication notice deadlines, that would put us on the February agenda to come back. If we come back with this or a modification of it. So just to muddy the waters even more, throwing that out as yet another option if that's where the applicant would like to go to have some time to actually look at the implications of making this type of agreement.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. I mean, we're at a point now, I think we've, we've explored a lot of the consequences. We've explored a couple of options, including deferral to give the applicant more time to consider the option of a, of a preservation agreement. I think whether he chooses to do, to do that would have something to do with his perception of the chances of this application being approved or not, or being recommended for approval. I think it would be helpful to get some, some more commissioners' perspectives so that we can get a good idea of how we want to proceed here. Commissioner Struckoff.
I did approach this, this, I'm with reservations about the loss of agricultural land in the forefront. Recognizing that the pattern of development for these two 10-acre lots was in keeping with the pattern of development along 400 Road. Pulled me closer to, it assuaged my concern about the loss of agricultural land, but we are charged with looking at the possibilities in the future. And when we do that, we see that, thanks to Commissioner Willie's excellent math and vision, the possibilities that are out there. And this is a real concern, especially in this part of our county. And so I would, I would be grateful for the chance for, to approve something that is in keeping with the pattern of development while preserving the agricultural lands and finding that happy medium where we can accommodate this request in a way that still managed to respect our, our indicated wish to preserve this agricultural land as expressed in our new comprehensive plan and, and in my heart as a, as a Douglas County resident. And so I would be in favor of deferring for, well, until February in good faith, for the sake of a good faith discussion between the applicant and the county on this topic.
Thank you, Commissioner Struckoff. David Carter, Chair. Further commissioners like to speak on this? Commissioner Sinclair.
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. I agree, I think we ought to defer it. I appreciate Tanya's comments, maybe helping us get off center a little bit. And I think it'd be worthwhile, the applicant exploring that and see if it's a viable option in his mind and coming back if he'd like to.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. Commissioner Payton.
I agree with that sentiment. I'd like to defer it and have it come back and have him talk to the county about possibly entering that agreement on the 40 acres.
Thank you, Commissioner Payton. David Carter, Chair. I think we have, we see a trend emerging. Would someone care to make a motion? Commissioner Willie.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner, can I make a quick comment first?
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm fine with deferring it to give the applicant time to talk with, with Tanya, with the county about options there. But I think more importantly, I would, at this point, it looks to me like I would vote in favor of allowing the rezoning for the two 10-acre plots if the preservation agreement were on the 40 acres. And I say that because I, not because I think we're done with this discussion overall. Certainly don't want to burden just this one landowner with it, but because I think it's about the best we can expect for this property at the, with the current regulations, which is, we would be, you know, sealing it at three houses for that 60 acres. So I just needed the applicant to know that if, if we do defer and it does come back, that I'm not planning any additional bombshells. I think that we, that that would be an acceptable answer for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. I would also note that Vice Chair Sinclair and I have been in conversations with, with Jeff and the staff about topics for our upcoming mid-month meetings, the ones that we are planning on holding on Monday evenings. And, and rural land use has been a, has been a topic on that list. And I think this discussion gives us an opportunity to bump that up. So I would direct that back to Jeff to ask that we prioritize that more than we might have thought we, we needed to in our recent discussions.
Development Services, we'd be happy to.
Thank you very much. With that, Commissioner Willie, would you care to, to make a motion? No pressure.
Not have the right screen pulled up. Maybe somebody else could take it.
Okay. Would anyone else care to make a motion at this point?
This is Commissioner Eric Struckoff. I move that we defer discussion of rezoning 20 acres from AG1 to AG2 at 400 and 2300 roads with instructions for conversation to take place between the applicant and staff regarding the agricultural preservation agreement and to bring that back to this body when that, when those deliberations are completed.
Thank you, Commissioner Struckoff. David Carter, Chair. Do I have a second? Commissioner Carpenter. Before we go to a vote, I just wanted to make a comment that, to reiterate my, my concern from earlier that this is kind of an, it feels like a bit of an unfair position to put one applicant in. But, you know, that's where we stand with, with this, with this issue. And, you know, I recognize the concerns on both sides and really thank both the applicant and the neighbors for, for their, their patience and their willing to engage, willingness to engage in this, in this process. Do we have any other discussion before we go to a vote? Okay, Jeff, could I ask you to call off the roll, please?
Certainly, Jeff Craig, Planning Development Services Director. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. That brings, David Carter, Chair, that brings us to item four. Consider approving a request to rezone approximately 10 acres located at 5851 Overland Drive from multi-dwelling residential to, oh, from, from RM12 to RM15. And I believe, Sandy, are you presenting on this item?
It's me, Mary.
Oh, forgive me, Mary.
It's okay. Mary Miller, City-County Planner. And as you mentioned, this application is a request to rezone 10 acres at 5851 Overland Drive. That's the southeast corner of the intersection of Overland Drive and George Williams Way from the RM12 to the RM15 district. These are both multi-dwelling residential districts. RM12 permits a maximum density of 12 dwelling units per acre and RM15 permits a maximum density of 15 dwelling units per acre. A maximum of 123 dwelling units are possible with the current RM12 zoning. The RM15 would permit a maximum of 153 dwelling units for the property. The applicant provided a concept plan, which was included as Attachment B with the staff report in your agenda packet. They are proposing a senior independent living facility, which is classified in the development code as a multi-dwelling structure. The concept plan provides an idea of the development being proposed for this property, but there could be changes. The zoning is not tied to the concept plan. Occasionally, changes are necessary to accommodate utilities or other factors, even a change in plans. In addition to an additional three dwelling units per acre, the RM15 district permits taller buildings. RM12 permits up to 35 feet tall. RM15 permits up to 25 feet, or 45 feet, I'm sorry. The applicant indicated they are planning a building with 134 dwelling units that is less than 35 feet tall. The project would consist of one and two bedroom units and amenities for the residence as noted in the use narrative in Attachment C of staff report. Plan 2040 provides the following recommendations for residential development within the city of Lawrence. Maximize development opportunities within Lawrence before expanding into the urban growth area. Increase the overall height and density of certain zoning districts to accommodate sustainable growth in areas that can take advantage of existing infrastructure. The proposed rezoning would increase the maximum density possible on this property from 12 dwelling units per acre to 15 and would increase the maximum height permitted from 35 to 45 feet. The comprehensive plan also encourages a variety of housing types as a way to create a functional and aesthetically unique residential environment and recommends that medium and higher-density housing types be integrated so that uses are appropriately mixed into the larger neighborhood context. The concept plan, provided on page three of the staff report, shows that a green space buffer is planned between the facility, the multi-dwelling structure, and the single dwelling residences to the north. Parking is provided on the north and south side of the building, and the building is oriented so the narrow side faces the duplexes or townhouses to the east. The layout shows that the development with a higher permitted density would be appropriately mixed into the larger neighborhood context. It is important to note that the rezoning only increases the maximum density and the maximum height, as noted earlier. The property has been zoned and plotted for multi-dwelling or apartment development since 2007. The multi-dwelling component is not being revised with this rezoning request. The proposed rezoning is in conformance with the recommendations in Plan 2040 for residential development within Lawrence. As shown in the figures on page four of the staff report, the subject property is bounded by community commercial zoning on the west. This is currently undeveloped. Single dwellings zoning to the north with a single-family neighborhood. RM12D or duplex zoning to the east with a duplex neighborhood, which has been divided to the Townhouse Act. And RS10 or urban reserve to the south. The RS10, single dwelling residence to the south is developed with a church, and the urban reserve property is currently undeveloped. The proposed RM15 zoning district with appropriate site design would be compatible with nearby zoning and land uses. The facility will require approval of a site plan and site design would be evaluated at that time. The compatibility of the zoning and the proposed use with the character of the neighborhood is another factor to consider. The graphic on page five of the staff report shows the boundaries of the neighborhood to the purpose of this review. It is bounded on the north by Rock Chalk Drive, which extends straight to Queens Road on the east. Queens Road is the eastern boundary. Sixth Street is the southern boundary, and K10 bounds it on the west. As this rezoning would increase the density of the subject property from 12 to 15 dwelling units per acre, this graphic notes the density of other residential properties in the area. Densities to the north of Overland Drive range from 6.2 dwelling units per acre to 12. Densities to the south of Overland Drive range from 12 dwelling units per acre to 20. This rezoning would maintain the character of the area by remaining within that established density range. The multi-dwelling use in this location would provide a transition between the future commercial uses to the west, the non-residential use to the south, and the lower-density single residences to the north, as well as the townhouse dwellings to the east, and would increase the housing types in this area. With appropriate site orientation and design, the additional density should be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Another review factor is the suitability of the subject property to the uses it is currently restricted to. No change in use is being proposed with this rezoning. The property is zoned for and is suitable for multi-dwelling residential development. The property is well-suited for the increased density being proposed due to the availability of city utilities and services and the proximity of the major transportation network. The rezoning would not change the permitted uses, but would increase density by three dwelling units per acre and would increase the maximum height permitted. As noted earlier, the site configuration and design would be evaluated with review of the site plan for the development to ensure compatibility and minimize detrimental effects on nearby properties. The increase in density should be well-accommodated with the existing utilities, services, and transportation network. With appropriate site design and layout, the use should have no detrimental effects on nearby properties. And as no detrimental impacts are anticipated with the zoning request, no gain has been identified to the public health, safety, and welfare by the denial. This property is not within the boundaries of an area plan. The property was rezoned in 2004 to the RM12 district, subject to the recording of a final plat, which was recorded in 2007. The property has remained vacant since annexation and rezoning. Several public communications were provided prior to the Planning Commission meeting, and these were included in your agenda packet. One of the communications asked for site elements to be considered or added, lighting, layout, landscaping, and birmingham. These items would be considered, as I mentioned, with review of the site plan. Notification of the site plan submittal is provided to property owners within 400 feet prior to the submittal of the application, and signs are posted on the property. Neighbor's input is encouraged in the review of the plans. Site plans are processed administratively. They can be appealed to the city commission. Some comments noted that they had been under the impression that the property was going to be developed with townhomes or duplexes similar to those to the east. The property had been plotted as one lot for multi-dwelling development since 2007. The intent had always been to develop the property with a multi-dwelling structure. There were petitions signed by several people. These are included in your packet, and they listed several concerns. And I'll just go through those here. Would the change in zoning affect property values or taxes? Would there be costs and disruptions due to utility expansion? Increased traffic volume on Overland Drive? Increased nuisance noise generated by residents and their vehicles? Noise from delivery and trash trucks? Bothersome lighting? Uncontrolled trash? Reduced views to the west and southwest? Unsightly view to the west and southwest? Reduced late afternoon and evening sunshine due to shade from structure and landscaping? And the loss of. And the loss of privacy? These concerns would be in place with the current with the multi dwelling development possible under the current RM 12 zoning, as well as the proposed RM 15 zoning. Items that will be reviewed and determined with the site plan include utilities, the traffic, the delivery and trash trucks, lighting, and the location of the structure. Various studies are required with site plans and metals. A downstream sanitary sewer analysis is required. This allows the city municipal services and operations divisions to determine if there is capacity in the sanitary sewer lines for the new development. A drainage test is required to ensure that the onsite detention provided accommodates stormwater for city standards. A traffic impact analysis is required to determine the amount of traffic expected. The study will identify if any improvements are needed to the nearby road system to accommodate the traffic while maintaining an acceptable level of service. If any improvements are needed to these, that would be up to the developer. Photometric plans are also required. These include point by point illumination arrays to ensure the amount of light trespass at the property boundaries does not exceed city standards. Lighting spec sheets are also required to ensure that the lighting is properly shielded to avoid offsite glare. The orientation of the building would be reviewed for compatibility with nearby land uses. In staff's opinion, most of the concerns raised in the public communications would be addressed at the site planning stage. It isn't possible to resolve the neighbors' expectations that this land would be developed with duplexes or townhomes similar to the property to the east. The proper site design and attention to the neighbors' concerns should result in a compatible project. And staff encourages the neighbors to contact the planning office when they receive notification of the site plan application, whether under the RM 12 or the RM 15 zoning. We'll be happy to provide them with plans and include them in the site planning process. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning request and forwarding the request to the city commission with a recommendation for approval. I'm happy to answer questions if you have any for me and the applicant is present as well.
Thank you very much, Mary. David Carter Chair. Would the applicant care to comment or follow up on Mary's comments?
Yes, I will. I'm Jerry Hill with Calamar Development, and I've also got with me Toby Williams with Powell Engineering. If you have any technical questions, just very, very briefly. We our company has been around 30 years. We have about 30 communities across the country. Lots of them here in the Midwest. Developing one right now in Topeka in conjunction with the Topeka School District on one of their campuses, where we're going to do a lot of intergenerational things with residents. This is an independent housing community. We don't provide medical, we don't provide meals, so you don't have all those deliveries and all of that. It's apartments and then programming for the residents. In addition to the units, there'll be a community room, a library, a small movie theater, a salon, a yoga room, an exercise room, a chapel, all those things, and then we program all those activities. To just give you an idea of who our communities consist of. We have younger and we have older and we have couples and single men, but our typical resident, if you just want to look at our average resident, would be a 72 year old single woman. About 65% of our people sell a home in order to move into our community. And almost all of them will come from within five to 10 miles of the facility. So that tells you who it is. People that no longer want to maintain a home, but they want to stay in their neighborhood, near their church, their doctors, their friends, their stores, all of those. That's who moves in to our communities. There there will be about 40% leased up before construction is done and within 12 months will be 100% leased up. And then there'll be a waiting list because somebody will move in and then they'll have a family member that or a friend that they want to move in as soon as something comes open. That's who we are. We are not a a build and flip, you know, there's a lot of senior housing going on now when people do that. We've this company is 30 years old and has never sold one of the communities it's built. We own the very first one we built. We operate them. We care about what we do. We've had quite a bit of communication with the neighbors. We had a meeting last week. A Zoom meeting with a whole group, and then we've had a lot of follow up. There's some change on that concept plan that we're going to make. You kind of respond to some of their concerns. I think I think we can accommodate many of the things that they were that they were concerned about. We we the the only reason that we're asking for the zoning change is to go from 123 to 134 because 134 units lets us do this programming and and structure the building and the programming like we like we typically do it and like like works for us. The height stuff, we're going to be within your current zoning, all of those other restrictions, and we're going to be fine with your staff review and and the city's review of our plan to make sure that that's the case. And so we appreciate the opportunity to come into the community and are glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hill. David Carter Chair. At this point, we have time for a public comment. If you want to speak on this item, please use your raise hand feature and you will be recognized by Kyle. And Kyle, please alert me if you get any speakers.
Kyle Cooley with planning. I do not see any raised hands in our Zoom meeting, but there are two individuals in the room who wish to speak on this item.
Very good. Thank you very much for the notification, David Carter Chair. So please step up to the podium and state your name and you have three minutes for your comments.
Good evening. My name is John Schultz. I live at 5753 Chimney Rock Circle. I will be addressing these thoughts, questions, and suggestions to both city planning as well as to Calamar and to the engineers. The first thing that I should note is as a community, we were pleased to hear that Calamar would provide full assurance that they would always operate the facility as a strictly age 55 and over site. We all support this idea. It is our best alternative. And it is a very important factor to all of us. We would like to see the city include some form of permanent covenant or whatever you might want to call it in their approval process that would assure that this would apply not only to Calamar, but also for any possible future owners of this property. One of my questions is, would the construction of this structure cause any new digging or utilities installation such as water, sewer, electric, gas, cable, et cetera? Or street widening through our properties such as along the north edge of my property adjacent to Overland Drive? And I am the northernmost unit in the Chimney Rocks Circle area. Would we as property owners be subject to any resulting property tax increases or assessments either now or in the future? Another question that I have is, how do you propose mitigating the view of the structure and buffering the activity created by the structure? Many homeowners adjacent to you, including myself, suggest installation of an evergreen such as an Arborvitie solid hedge near the top of the berm. Without getting into great detail, these trees would need to be maintained and replaced as necessary, of course, by the property owner. The consensus appears to be that we would not like to have any form of fencing between us at the top of that berm. Finally, would it be possible to move the entrance drive approximately 125 to 150 feet further west so that would be closer to or be in line with the entrance to Three Forks Drive? This would put it more in line with your front door while still allowing a modest curve in the drive to be retained. A benefit to you would be that the steepness of the interest drive would be more gradual. Finally, I'd just like to say happy holidays to everyone. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much, sir. And we have another speaker. And if you could state your name, and again, you also have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Dan Gaylor. I live at 5751 Chimney Rock Circle. And we our property borders the east edge of the property in question here, so we're right there next to them. First, I want to reiterate what what John had to say about the 55 and older community. It is our best option, we feel, for the Chimney Rocks Circle area. And quite frankly, we're quite excited about that. We're also very encouraged that both Jerry and Toby have taken the initiative to work with us. We appreciate that. They they've indicated they want to be good neighbors and and we believe that to be the case. Do have a few questions from residents in the area that I'll talk about here this evening. Several of the owners in our area have asked for some assurances that there will not be additional structures added to the property for any of the future owners. They did have questions about a possible swimming pool and that sort of thing, but I think Jerry in his opening statement addressed some of those issues. And what he had to say sounded pretty good, actually, for the future of that property, and it's it's good to know that they've never sold any of those properties over 30 years. We'd also like to request that the lighting, that we would have some some say into the lighting to make sure we don't have issues with too bright lights or into the Chimney Rock Circle area. And hopefully, we can we get with with Jerry and Toby on that and work on that together. Also, there's there's some some questions about property values in the neighborhood being adversely affected by this project. Some folks are concerned about that, especially the ones that are closest to the property that are immediately adjacent to the property. Lastly, there is a question and a request. If possibly, and this would mostly go to to Jerry, I think, and Toby. If you could just simply eliminate the the building of the northernmost garage structure, it holds six cars from next to east of the property line and shift the remaining two garage structures south. If that would be a possibility, we would appreciate that you would take that into consideration. It would benefit most of us that are bordering that property, that that east side of the property. And then also, if you would plant trees along that east side, that would also help with us as far as screening the property. Appreciate your time this evening and attention, and thanks for letting us speak.
Thank you very much for your comments. David Carter Chair turns back over to Mr. Hill. You have five minutes to address public comments.
Well, Jerry Hill, applicant. I will I won't take five minutes to do that. Both mentioned that north bay of garages that's on the plan. And I I think I responded today to an email on that. We can figure that out. We can really either reduce the number of garages or we'll put them someplace else on the site. That seemed to be a major issue that the neighbors had in our meeting last week and since then, and so we can accommodate that. And again, the usage of the facility. I don't know how Lawrence goes about protecting that. We're we're fine with anything because we often will have deed restrictions on our properties that say it can't it can't be anything else. It's not going to it's it's only designed to be appropriate for seniors. We're only going to operate it for seniors. And so we're fine with some kind of a restriction that says that it's a it's a senior only building because that impacts lots of those other concerns. There's not there's for example, our residents, only about 75% of our residents will even own a car. And there's not a lot of traffic. There's not trash. There's not people moving in and out. There's not kids. There's not college students. There's not there's not all those things that you have with a lot of multifamily you just don't have with ours. Ours in the evening when people in the neighborhood want it quiet, ours is quiet. And so we don't mind those kind of restrictions because that's the kind of community that we'll that we're putting in place there. There are people that already live in the area that just want to stay in the area, and so we'll we will we'll be I'm confident we can accommodate the things the neighbors have raised with with the project.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Hill. David Carter Chair. With that, I'll turn it over to the commission for any questions they have, either for Mr. Hill or for Mary. Commissioner Ashworth?
Hi, Commissioner Ashworth. I because it is already zoned RM, I'm not concerned about that part of the change in zoning. And most of the issues seem to be able to be addressed at the site planning phase of this. My only concern is for the height with the change in zoning. I'm driving by that site and looking at it. Three story structure would loom essentially over the adjoining properties. So I'm wondering if that could potentially be a condition where the height would be restricted more so than the RM 15 would allow.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashworth. Is that a question for the applicant or for?
That is a question for staff, I believe, if that can be a modification. I believe that is a condition that could be applied to the zoning. You know, we do conditional zoning, so there could be a limit on the height, and Jeff can correct me if I'm incorrect there.
Jeff, do you have any follow up to that?
Jeff Craig, Plaine Development Services Director. I believe Mary is correct. I don't have anything really to add to that item.
Okay, thanks. David Carter Chair. I oh, forgive me, Mr. Hill. I was just going to say make an observation. I think that's also something that would be presumably discussed during the site plan phase. You know, noticing the 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 lines of sight on that really steep slope. It seemed to me that also by setting the the structure back from the property line, that's also another way to to limit that. But I'm sorry, Mr. Hill, I didn't mean to to cut you off. You wanted to respond to Commissioner Ashworth's comment.
I was going to make that point, and I was going to say, if you if you're familiar with the site, it's it's a hillside, of course, that's been cut out. And there's a large berm between us and the neighbors, which is what the neighbors were talking about in terms of what are trees on the top of and everything. And so by moving the building to the back, for example, in that back of the building, 18 feet of the building is below the berm that's that's existing. So you're only really only got about a story and a half that's above the berm now as the berm exists and and the back portion of that building. And part of the reason that the neighbors are concerned about that front bay of garages is that's really the only thing that sticks out there that that causes a lot of concern with those neighbors along there. And so that's part of it. We're going to be within the restrictions that exist now. Because even though you would allow us to go higher, our buildings under your are are meet your current guidelines for the zoning that's currently in place. And we don't intend to go any higher than that than what's allowed right now.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. David Carter Chair. One other observation I was going to make. You know, you've already responded to the neighbors' concerns about the placement of the garages. And you know, one other thought about how close they they appear, at least in the kind of draft plan, how close they seem to be to the property line. I imagine by moving those garages, you're also reducing kind of the looming nature of of structures over the neighbors. So you know, it seems like if you're willing to take that up as part of the site plan discussions, you know, to be flexible on that front. It looks like you've got lots of choices, for example, in the north side of the property, perhaps. So and that's not really a question, but you're welcome to to respond to it if you like.
We're looking at now the garages on the back part of the property actually tucked into the berm that's there now, and so it it hides the garages and that and that back part of the property. It's that front bay that I think there's the most concern about is because it's beyond the berm, and so it kind of would be up above. And so I I think that's part of the issue on the garages.
I see. Thank you. David Carter Chair, Commissioner Sands?
Thank you, Rob Sands, Plaine Commissioner. A question for Mary. So in talking about the height, I just kind of want to put a slightly finer point at it. The applicant states that ground level for the project is going to be about 18 feet lower than the neighboring properties. What is the maximum height allowed for the as it's currently zoned?
An RM 12 allows you up to 35 feet. And when there's a grade change on each side of the the structure, the code has a special way to calculate height. But right now, you can be up to 35. But right now, you can be up to 35 feet.
So what is that, if I can ask, if I can put you on the spot? Well, hell, I'm going to put you on the spot on that on that response. So what's the maximum height allowed for RM 15?
I'm I'm 15. You can be up to 45 feet.
Okay, so a 10 10-foot difference. And we're already going to see an 18-foot reduction according to the applicant. So now, Mary, what were you going to say about how code calculates the height?
I'd have to pull up my development code, but we have, when there's a grade change, if you're on a slope, I believe, I'd have to get the development code out and tell you how you do it. I can do that real quick.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. So the only point I'm trying to make, Mr. Chair, is that normally, I would I would be probably supportive of some sort of condition with the rezoning. But and I know this, this, the proposed, this is really can call it a site plan, but this concept plan. I don't necessarily think that a placing a condition on the applicant is is really a productive measure. There's already going to be quite a bit of a reduction. I've seen that site. I know I know where he's talking about. I drive by it every day when I go to work. And it is considerably lower than the neighboring properties.
Thank you, Commissioner Sands. David Carter, Chair. Mary, you have a response to the?
Yeah, Mary Miller, Planner. And so the way you measure height depends if you're on a slope and if the this if you measure 10 feet higher than the lowest grade, when the ground surface is more than 10 feet above the lowest grade. So if you're on a slope, you measure out and you start 10 feet up, and that's where you measure your height from. I believe I have that right. So when you're when you're down, you're on a steep slope, they take that into account because you have to decide where are you going to measure your height from.
Thank you. Commissioner Sands, does that address your question? Very good. Thanks. Very good. Other questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Willie.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. I have a question for Mary. So are there buffer requirements between the RM 12D and the RM 12? And would that be are there buffer requirements already? And would that be any different between the RM 12D and the RM 15?
No, there's no buffering requirements. All RM districts are seeing the same. There is a buffering requirement between RM and RS and between RM and the commercial district to the west, but not between the RMs. They can always add landscaping, but it's not a requirement.
Thank you, Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner, and just following up. So so that's all then a discussion between the neighborhood and the applicant to kind of as a as a goodwill gesture. Is that right?
Mary Miller, Planner. Yes, it is. And one thing that helps with neighborhood discussions is the fact that site plans can be appealed. We've always had applicants and neighbors work well together. So usually, they make the concessions that they can. And we haven't had too many issues where we haven't been able to resolve. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Commissioner Shanklin.
Greg Shanklin, Planning Commissioner. I have a question for Mr. Hill. In the staff report, it says that the per unit cost savings will run solely to the benefit of the residents by reducing their lease rates. But elsewhere in the report, it says that rents will be marked. And I just wondered if you could reconcile that for him.
Well, I can't. I don't know exactly what went into the wording in the staff report, but but the 134 units lets us with our with our rental rates, and I'll talk about those in just a minute, let us provide all of those accommodations that I just talked about, the theater, all the rest of the things, and staff those. So that so that if we had fewer units, we'd have to charge more rent to be able to have those accommodations there and those amenities there. Our rental rates, this our target market, we we are a middle-class community. You've got all kinds of senior housing now, and you've got everything from subsidized housing to housing you have to buy into to continuing care communities where you can pay $3,000 or $4,000 a month to live in them, all those things. Our rent rates in this facility will be in the in the $1,000 to $1,300 a month rate, maybe as low as 900 for some of the the small units. So it's a middle income kind of thing. And so we have to have that number of units in order to make make the amenities available. What what we tell our residents, and what I think is true, is we provide the same kind of amenities that you get in a higher-end place, the theaters, the the computer labs and the gymnasium, the all of those things. We provide those in a much lower price range. But over the years, we our our model is that it takes 134 units to be able to staff it and build it and make it operate. So that's that is really the issue with this zoning is to go from 123 to 134. It's okay with us for you for us to ultimately be restricted to 134. It's okay with us to be restricted to senior housing because that's that's what we build. And we're going to meet your height requirements that exist now. It's just this issue of these 11 more, these 11 more units.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Thank you, Commissioner Shanklin. Commissioner Willie.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. Another question from Mary. Mr. Schultz, the neighbor that spoke, asked about whether there would be any utility improvements that would be required to be paid for by the neighborhood. Can you address if there would be any tax increases or specials or anything that would be applied any to anyone other than the developer?
No, this is a there's no like a benefit districts being proposed. The developer would be responsible for paying for any improvements themselves.
Thank you, Mary. Other questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Sinclair.
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. Purely a procedural question, maybe for Mary, or I'm not sure if it'd be better for Randy, but some of the comments are posed to us in the form of petitions, at least us, the way they're self-styled. Is that anything that bears any sort of significance for our purposes tonight? As opposed to just entertaining those as comments?
This is Randy Lark, Deputy City Attorney. They're basically comments at this stage of the proceedings. There's really nothing in the state statutes or anything that allows petitions, per se, or that they have any legal effect other than they would operate as a comment at this point.
Thanks, Randy. Thanks, Commissioner Sinclair. David Carter, Chair. Any other questions? Would anyone care to make a motion at this point? For my part, I think the the applicant has made a a good faith engagement with the neighborhood. I want to, you know, commend the applicant for engaging the way they have and for the and the neighbors entering into the conversation. It looks like there, you know, it's mostly points of consensus here. And the outstanding issues can largely be addressed during the site planning phase. Commissioner Sands.
Rob Sands, Planning Commissioner. I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
I recommend that we oh, I messed it up. Sorry. I recommend that we rezone. We recommend. Hang on.
It's all right. It's a it's a it's a long form.
All right, I recommend we recommend that we forward this request to rezone approximately 10.257 acres of RM 12 to RM 15 district to the city commission with a recommendation for approval based upon the findings and facts presented in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Sands. David Carter, Chair. Do I have a second? Commissioner Struckoff. And any further discussion? All right, thanks. Jeff, could I ask you to read off the roll, please?
Jeff Craig, Planning Development Services Director, certainly. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair, that brings us to our final item of the evening, item five, Consider Request to Rezone Approximately 1.3 Acres From Planned Office Development to Neighborhood Shopping Center at 4431 Bauer Farm Drive. And with this, I believe Sandy is presenting.
Good evening, Sandy Day Planning. You're correct. This item is a rezoning for the Bauer Farm Plan Development. The proposed request really is about modifying the uses within the development plan. But because this is under the old code, in order to rezone the property, I'm sorry, in order to change the uses of the property within that planned development, they actually do need to rezone it and put it into an appropriate district of the land development code. Property is adjacent to West Sixth Street and is part of the Sixth Street and Waukerusa commercial node as shown in Plan 2040. The property was approved with a specific set of uses within that planned office development per the 1966 code and part of the larger Bauer Farm Plan Development that also includes commercial and residential offices within that project. The property is currently vacant. The original development plan identified this property as designated for a bank use with the attending drive-through. The development plan was revised a couple of years ago, and the bank use was relocated to the west side of the planned development. At this time, all of the drive-through uses within the Bauer Farm Plan Development have been allocated. The proposed request is intended to facilitate a mixed-use multi-tenant office building with multiple tenant spaces, including a separate pharmacy use, as discussed in the staff report. The proposed pharmacy really differs from the existing pharmacy use in Bauer Farm. But the land development code does not distinguish between a retail pharmacy and what the applicant describes as a clinical pharmacy. And we will let them explain more in detail about that. The main characteristic between the two types of pharmacies is really the retail component associated with those retail pharmacies like CVS and Walgreens. Staff did a review of the permitted uses, both of what was within the scope of the planned development restrictions and what an appropriate or related zoning district would be for this property to allow really the the similar uses that are still there. Additionally, if approved, this does add the option for an additional drive-through within that parcel per that zoning. The proposed zoning would bring the property into conformance with the land development code. And it would be a more appropriate base district to allow the flexibility of the clinical pharmacy, if we've talked about. The drive-through use could also be permitted. The use will be considered a personal convenience use in the land development code. The medical offices you uses would also be permitted in the CN2 district, subject to a special use permit if this is approved. The area was identified as part of the nodal plan and appropriate for medium and high-density residential uses or for mixed residential office uses. Bauer Farm has developed with a very specific set of uses within that development. And rather than being a vertical mixed use, it is a horizontal mixed use within that. And approval or development of this property would really fill out that final corner of the intersection at Folks Road and West Sixth Street. Properties remained undeveloped since its approval back in 2005. It is the last residential lot within the Bauer Farm Plan Development. An approval of the request would activate property and build out that intersection, as I mentioned. Staff does support the rezoning and bringing it into the land development code. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Approval of the request would allow the applicant to move forward with the site plan, but until they move through the land use questions associated with this property, they cannot do that. The applicant included a concept site plan in their application as well. And that that is a concept plan, we would go through a more formal review of that project if the zoning is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. And is the would the applicant care to make any comments to follow up on Sandy's report?
Yes, this is Brian Kemp of Trainer Hotel. Good evening, Commissioners and City Staff. As many mentioned in her so eloquently written report, this property will remain undeveloped in its current phase as it's only approved to be a bank. And no one wants to build a bank without a drive-through. Mr. Sigler has come forward with an excellent plan for this lot. We think it would be in great compliance with the area. Think it would be very low impact, and we think it's perfect for that corner. Mr. Sigler is with us this evening to answer any questions that you may have about the proposed uses of the lot. And with that, I want to thank Sandy for the excellent job. And please let us know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp, David Carter, Chair. Let's see, I don't know if we've got any any members of the public who would be who want to speak. If so, I would ask you to use the raise hand function, and you'll be recognized by Kyle. And meanwhile, while you're checking out the participants list, Kyle, could you confirm if there's anybody present in the commission chamber who might be interested in speaking this evening?
I'll be with planning. We have no more members of the public present in the city commission chamber. And so far, I do not see any hands that are being raised.
Very good. Thank you, David Carter, Chair. With that, I'll turn it over to the Commission for any questions to the applicant or to Sandy. I'm feeling an awful lot of pressure to come up with one myself, but no, I think the the as Sandy's report has has stated, and this this seems to be in line with 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 other uses, it's complementary to uses across Sixth Street. If I'm not mistaken, this is essentially a relocation. I guess this would be a question for Mr. for Mr. Sigler. If this is a relocation of the existing pharmacy, or is this a another another adjunct use to the one? I think if I'm not mistaken, you've got one on the south side of Sixth Street. Is that correct?
Yes, and thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Yes, it would be a relocation and a slight expansion. One of the things that that we do is we do our own compounding of special medicines, different dosage forms, etc. And there's going to be some new rules on how those compounding areas have to be constructed. And where we're at now doesn't have that capability. So we're wanting to relocate into a space that we can expand that capability. So that's that. And we just need a little bit more room, and where we're at, we don't have the room.
Okay, thank you, David Carter, Chair. I guess a follow-up question. It wasn't clear to me. Do you intend for this to be exclusively pharmacy space? Or, you know, I've noticed the 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 it's labeled pharmacy and medical office. Are you expecting to, you know, rent out spaces to tenants? And, you know, I assume that would affect. It looks like the concept plan has lots of has plenty of parking. But what is that? What's the overall vision for the use of the of the structure?
Yeah, so the overall vision was to split the building, which we're looking at about a 10,000-square-foot building, into into three separate tenants, the pharmacy being one. And we've got, we're working with a medical practice right now, a medical doctor who wants to relocate there. And he will, his practice will take up at least a third of it, if not more. So then we would have probably a little less than a third yet to be rented out to another tenant. And in a perfect world, we would have another medical practice there, so we could keep it all medical. But if we had another office there, such as a insurance agency or something like that, if the if the rezoning allows it, you know, we would entertain that as well.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. David Carter, Chair. Other questions from Commissioners? Or motions from Commissioners? Commissioner Sinclair.
If there are no other comments, I'd be happy to make a motion. Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner, excuse me.
I don't see any other comments. I think you're welcome to make a motion. If we, there's always time for extra discussion before the vote.
True. Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. I move that we recommend approval of the request to rezone approximately 1.377 acres from POD Bauer Farm Planned Office Development District to CN2 Neighborhood Commercial Center District, based on the findings presented in the staff report, and forward it to the City Commission with that recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioners Sinclair. Do I have a second? From Commissioner Struckoff. Any further discussion? All right, with that, Jeff, could I ask you to read off the roll, please?
Jeff Craig, Planning Development Services Director, certainly. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you very much. I believe, let's see, that brings us to the end of the agenda. I don't know if there are any non, other non-agenda items that Commissioners need to discuss before we adjourn. And Jeff, if there's nothing else coming from you, I'm sorry, Commissioner Carpenter.
Jim Carter, Planning Commissioner. Has, this is a question to Jeff. Has everybody filled out the survey for the annual retreat review, whatever we're gonna call it this year?
Jeff Craig, Planning Development Services Director. I will defer to Becky on that one, as I believe she has the best information for that.
Becky Pepper at the Planning Department. No, we have not received everyone's answers to that survey. So just so you're aware, we did send out a doodle survey asking when you would be most available to hold our Planning Commission orientation. So take a look for that in your email. If you don't see that, let me know, and we can make sure that we sent it to the right, right address for you.
Thank you, Becky. And thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Yeah, reminder to that. And any, any further items from any of the Commissioners or from staff? And if not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Becky, it looks like you might be speaking. No, okay, great. Yeah, I'd see Commissioner Sinclair. You'd like to make a motion. Do I have a second? From Commissioner Ashworth. Jeff, could you read off the roll, please?
Yes, Jeff Craig, Planning Development Services Director. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Fantastic. Looks like we're adjourned. I wish everybody a safe and happy holiday, and we'll see you again in the new year.
Bye, everybody.
Christmas, happy holidays, merry new year.
Looking forward to it.
Yes, indeed. Let it be better than this one.